And we have roll call.
Councilmember Beck Meyer.
Present.
Councilmember Vatilas.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tam-Stick.
Present.
Mayor Beer.
Here.
All council members are present. I'll make a short statement about tonight's meeting format. This meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 54953, as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. The meeting may also be observed live on local TV Channel 26 or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through participation via Zoom. For those wishing to comment, use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item. And for those dialing in, use star nine to raise your hand to request to speak. The city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and allow you to unmute after calling you by screen name or the last four digits of your phone number if dialing in. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting. No email comments were received by 12:00 PM today. The format of this meeting may be altered, or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check on the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.org for any updates.
Thank you, Sarah. I'll now read the land acknowledgement. "The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatush Aloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatush Aloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As indigenous protectors of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatush Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as caretakers of this place, as well as for the peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples, and wish to pay our respects to their ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatush Aloni people." Slipped the flag by Councilmember Vatilas.
Sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so tonight is a special meeting, which means that we do not have oral communications, correct? Everyone correct? We only can, so there's only public comment on this topic, and we do not have oral communications?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So for consideration, item one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pacifica stating its intention to hold a public hearing, consider updating the city's sewer service charges beginning tax year 2022-2023, for a five-year period from year 2022-2023 to 2026-2027, and provide direction on sewer capacity fees related to accessory dwelling units. Tonight, we have, I see Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works, so I'm just gonna go to you first, Lisa, and you can announce anyone else who's here.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Beer. So, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tam and councilmembers, Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. And tonight, we are requesting that the council, recommending that the council approve the resolution that Mayor Beer just mentioned, and also provide some direction to staff on sewer capacity fees related to accessory dwelling units. These recommendations are related to two wastewater studies that city staff recently completed in conjunction with a consultant. And before, actually, we'll have city clerk Coffee pull up a PowerPoint presentation we have on that. And I'd like to introduce our team, though, while she's putting that up. So from the city, we had Maria Aguilar, who's our plant manager, Nelson Slater, who's our senior wastewater engineer. We have Brian Martinez, who is our collection system manager. We also had Megan Burke from the city attorney's office, who reviewed the studies. And our consultant is Bardo Wells &amp; Associates. They are wastewater financial experts. And we have Doug Dove and Michael DeGroot from Bardo Wells &amp; Associates. So I, next slide, please. So I wanted to briefly provide an overview and background on these two studies that were recently completed in the last six months. So the first study was a wastewater sewer capacity fee study. And this is a one-time developer fee that was, that was developed during the study that's going to show us what a developer would need to pay for a fair share contribution to the wastewater infrastructure that is currently in place. So that's things like the plant, and of course, our pump stations, and additionally, also for our capital improvement program. Now, this is the first time that this fee is being reviewed for many years. It was back in 1975 when that fee was last reviewed. So the second study that was recently completed was a wastewater rate study. And this is a study that is completed every five years, and it determines the fee change that is needed in order to fund our wastewater program. And these needs include operation, maintenance, our debt service, Consumer Price Index, and our capital improvement program. As I mentioned, this is completed every five years, with the last study completed in 2017. And in order to complete the wastewater rate study, staff does need to put together a projected 10-year capital improvement program. So I did want to go into a little bit more detail in the last two bullets that are in orange text. So next slide, please. So the current rate study that was recently completed is recommending a 3.5% increase per year for the next five years for wastewater rates. Now, the previous rate study that was completed in 2017 raised rates 8% for the first three years, and then 7% for the next two years. And if you look at the graph below, you can see the blue line shows what was previously approved by council and put in place. You can see that the rates started off at 8% for three years, and then dropped down to 7% for the last two years, including the year that we're in, which is 21-22. So the rates that are being recommended are much lower than those rates from 2017. We are recommending a 3.5% per year increase to the wastewater rates. It is important to note that the rates that were approved in 2017 also did include funding of the equalization basin. Next slide, please. Additionally, as I mentioned, staff does need to develop a 10-year capital improvement program in order to have the sewer rate study completed. So I did want to talk about some key benefits of the newly developed 10-year CIP. And these are addressing the increased storm events that we've been seeing, such as the 1% chance storm that we saw in October that dropped a record seven inches of rain in a 24-hour period of time. And it's also going to be addressing our aging infrastructure. So the first key benefit is that we are increasing the pipe system infiltration and inflow, or INI repair, by two times from what was done in the previous 10 years. And so just to remind council, that INI is the storm water that gets into our sewer system during rain events, and also because of groundwater. And this is due to the age of our collection system, some cracking, also because of connections. And that extra flow that gets into our collection system is very hard on our system. It's hard on our plant. It is hard on our pump stations. It's also can be, you know, an environmental hazard, because we risk having sanitary sewer overflows or bypasses because of it. So to give perspective of what we mean by two times, we're going to be increasing it two times from what was done in the prior 10 years. If you look at the bar graph on the bottom left, you can see that from the last 10 years, fiscal year 1213 to fiscal year 2122, we put in about 34,000 lineal feet of sewer repair for INI. What we're recommending for the next 10 years is doing about 70,000 lineal feet of INI repair, which is about 13 miles of basically new sewer line that would be in place. Something else that's important to note, if you look at the graph over on the right, you can see that INI costs money, not just because it's hard on our equipment, but also because we actually have to pay to treat that increased flow, just like it was regular wastewater. So for every thousand gallons of INI that gets into our system, there's a cost associated with it. And you can see, based on this graph, in a dry year, we might get 50 million gallons of INI, or storm water, into our sewer system that we have to treat. And in a wet year, that can be up to 150 million gallons. Now, if you average that out, and we look at what our costs are, you know, for 1,000 gallons of treating, 1,000 gallons extra flow in our system, that cost is going to be around $700,000. So that's annually. So you can see, it is important for us to try to fix the INI problem that is occurring currently. Next slide, please. Another key benefit is that we're going to be increasing the plant equipment replacement by four times, what was done in the previous 10 years. Of course, our plant is now 20 years old, and so of course, replacement of that equipment is also going to have to increase from what it was previously. And as you can see from the bar chart, the previous 10 years, we replaced about $7.5 million worth of equipment. In the next 10-year period, we are recommending replacement of about $35 million of plant equipment in order to replace that outdated equipment. Now, a third key benefit is we're going to be augmenting our wastewater engineering staff in order for us to deliver this increased capital improvement program. And it's important to note that our new proposed five-year capital improvement program has been increased by two times from what was previously approved by council in June of 2021, and that was the fiscal year 2122, five-year CIP. So this is a much larger program, so we do have to augment our engineering staff to deliver that. That augmentation is, what we're recommending is a reclassification of the senior engineer position to an engineering manager position. We are recommending the add of one position, an assistant associate engineer that would go, be working under that wastewater engineering manager. Wastewater engineering manager would also have to take on projects, and also have to work with several consultant program managers, and also construction managers in order to get the work done. And finally, we are adding funding in order to protect our sewer infrastructure in Sharp Park. And as council may remember, we came to council last fall in 2021 with the Collection System Master Plan update. Council did approve that master plan, adopt that master plan. And a recommendation in that master plan was for the wastewater division to pay its share of fair contribution to the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project. And I noted, this was the most cost-effective way to protect that infrastructure in Sharp Park. Next slide, please. And in addition to repairing the INI in the collection system, that will help us to save money, I also wanted to point out a couple of wastewater treatment plant projects that are also helping us save money. So we have the Photovoltaic System Improvement Project, which has, which started in 2021. It is ongoing, it has not been completed yet, but when it is completed, it will have replaced 300 kilowatts of photovoltaic, existing older system with a newer, higher-power output system. The estimated cost for that is about $1.5 million. And ultimately, when that project is completed, they are anticipating that we would have an estimated annual saving of about $200,000 per year. Next slide, please. Additionally, I wanted to talk about the Ultraviolet Disinfection System Upgrade Project. Again, just like the plant, this system is now 20 years old. It needs to be replaced. Council may remember that the city pioneered use of UV to allow for the release of our recycled water into the Calera Creek wetlands and creek area, because that treated water has no residual chlorine, and that it would have, it was treated through a more traditional plant. So that's an important system for us. Because it is old, we do need to replace it, also because the manufacturer is not going to be providing any new parts for that, because that is an old system. It's an expensive system to replace. It's about $11.5 million. And it's important to note, when we replace that, we will be having, with the new system, 70% energy savings from the previous system. And with that energy savings and other system efficiencies that we're going to be getting from that, we are expecting to be saving about $400,000 annually with that new system. Next slide, please. So with that, I wanted to pass it over to Michael DeGroot to get into some more of the details of the study. And then I'm going to hop back on at the end to talk about the ADU capacity fees.
Thank you, Lisa. So I'd like to go over first the presentation contents. I'm going to be talking about your wastewater rates, which recover your annual costs of the sewer system, and talk about basics and background, your adopted wastewater rates, your capital improvement program, rate recommendations, and our rate survey and bill comparison. And then also talk about your wastewater capacity fees, which is the one-time connection fee that developers pay to connect to your system. And I'll be going over background, your current capacity fees, our proposed methodology and capacity fees, our capacity fee surveys, and our capacity fee implementation options. Next slide, please. Next slide. So wastewater rate basics. Essentially, the city's wastewater enterprise is self-supporting and is primarily funded through your rates. Revenues cannot exceed the cost of providing service based on state law, and revenues can only be used for the purpose which they're imposed. And charges cannot exceed the proportional cost of the service attributable to each customer. Next slide. So when we developed your rates, we looked at several things, including your capital improvement program, your operations and maintenance costs, increase in the Consumer Price Index, which we factored in about 3% per year, as well as your current debt service and projected debt service. And the city is recommending about $60.5 million for wastewater capital improvements over the next five years. $25.5 million for collection system, $25 million for wastewater treatment plant, and $10 million for the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project. Next slide. So this shows you your current adopted rates. And currently, you charge a rate per 100 cubic foot of water usage. And 100 cubic foot is about 748 gallons. So these are the rates that were adopted in the last five-year period, and you can see that we implemented 3.8% increases and 2.7% increases. And your current rate is $18.81 per 100 cubic foot, and a $903.06 per year minimum charge. And I think it's important to point out that your residential customers have their usage calculated by multiplying the annual use by 0.9. And that is because we're removing about 10%, which is estimated to be used for irrigation. While commercial is applied to strength factors, where low-strength customers, such as car washes, are multiplied by 0.9, whereas a high-strength customer, such as a restaurant, is multiplied by 1.6. Next slide, please. So here is your wastewater capital program for the next five years. And as I mentioned, it's about, it's $60.5 million over five years. Major projects include increased collection system repair of $25 million, Ultraviolet Disinfection System Upgrade of $11.3 million, the relocation of the sewer main at SFRV Park of $3.8 million, and Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project of $10 million. Next slide, please. So we're recommending that the city increase the sewer rates by 3.5% per year for the next five years. And we're also, along with that, projecting a $31.6 million loan will be required in FY 2223, and a $52.4 million loan in FY 2627 to fund the planned capital projects. Now, the city is projected to have strong debt service coverage of at least 1.47x throughout the five-year projection period, and your minimum requirement is 1.25x. And debt service is calculated based on your net revenues divided by your annual debt service. Next slide, please. So this is a schedule of the proposed rates. And you can see the current rate is $18.81, and we're recommending keeping your current rate structure and the current methodology, we think, is working well, and increasing the rates by 3.5% each year. So you can see the rate is going from $18.81 per 100 cubic foot to $22.34 by 2627. Next slide, please. So how do you compare with other regional agencies? So this is a single-family residential monthly sewer bill survey for the region based on five units of water usage. And the regional average based on this usage is $96.70, and you're currently at $94.07. And based on our proposed rates, in the first year, your average bill will go to $97.36. And this is a $3.29 per month increase. Next slide, please. So that's it for the rates. And now I'd like to talk about your wastewater capacity fees. Next slide. So capacity fees are the one-time fee that new customers pay to connect to your wastewater system. And they're designed to recover infrastructure and capital costs from new development. The city currently charges $3,825 per single-family home, which is one of the lower fees of our survey. And currently, the city charges, currently, there are no charges for accessory dwelling units. Next slide, please. So proposed capacity fees are based on meter size, where larger meters are assumed to use more wastewater. And this aligns with industry trends like North Coast County Water District's meter-based water capacity fee charges. Capacity fees for single-family dwellings are based on a dollar per home charge, while accessory dwelling units are calculated on a dollar per drainage fixture unit. The fees are calculated based on the total cost of facilities, including the CIP, divided by the total number of customers projected to be served through build-out. Next slide. So this is a schedule of our proposed wastewater capacity fees. And you can see the cost per one-inch meter equivalent, which is a typical single-family home, is proposed to be $12,391. And the cost per fixture unit is $652.16. And larger meters are proposed to pay proportionally more based on their size of meter. And I'd like to point out some examples for these meter sizes. You know, a typical restaurant would be in the one-inch to two-inch category. A 6-8 inch to 8-inch customer would be something like a large condominium or office building. And something like a hotel would be a four-inch meter, just to give you an idea. Next slide, please. So here's an example of how the accessory dwelling units are calculated. Essentially, consider, for example, consider the fee of a customer with an ADU that includes a lavatory, shower, kitchen sink, and toilet. The total drainage fixture units, based on this table, would be calculated to be eight. And the cost per drainage fixture unit of $652.16 would be multiplied by eight to determine a total fee of $5,217.28. And these drainage fixture units are based on the California Plumbing Code. So you could see, something like a dishwasher has two drainage fixture units, a toilet would be three, and so on. Next slide, please. So this is our comparison survey for the capacity fee charges. You can see, you're currently on the very low end, not the lowest, but one of the lower ones, at $3,825. And we're proposing a fee of $12,391. And this compares to the average in our survey of $10,137. It's important to note that that average includes a lot of agencies on the lower end that haven't increased their fees in some time. Next slide, please. And here's a survey for the accessory dwelling units. And you can see, there's a lot less agencies that charge fees for accessory dwelling units, but you would be a little bit above the average of the survey of $6,024. And your fee would be $7,826 for 12 fixture units. And we assume that other agencies are using about 500 square feet for their fee, but if we increase that square footage estimate, you would compare a little bit better on this survey. Next slide, please. And now I'd like to turn the presentation back over to Lisa to discuss the ADU policies.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. So in case the council did want to have a policy discussion tonight on the ADU capacity fee, I wanted to provide you with some information. So the state law does allow ADU capacity fees for certain types of ADUs, and these are listed here. So the first one is if the ADU is built at the same time as the primary unit. The second one is if the ADU is in the primary unit or in existing structure, but it expands the footprint by 150 square feet or more. And then the third one is if the ADU is separate from the primary unit or the existing structure. So there's several options that are listed. Of course, there's more than just these, related to how council could implement ADU capacity fees. So the first bullet point notes that the council could decide to charge a full fee based on the number of fixture units, as was just discussed by Michael. Also, council could charge no or a lower fee to incentivize ADU construction within the city. And additionally, the council could charge no or a lower fee for residents who are willing to rent those units at a lower rate. Now, it is important, and I've got this asterisk, the last two bullets, that the city would need to have a policy in place for these last two bullet actions. And we do have Megan Burke here from the city attorney's office, who can provide additional information related to this and the policy that would have to be put in place. I also did want to provide some additional information. I know there were some questions related to how many billing permits have been issued for ADUs by the city in the last couple of years. So I did receive some information from our planning department, building department. And in 2019, we issued 12 ADU permits. And these are, not all of these were built, but half of them have been finalized. In 2020, there were 25 building permits issued for ADUs. And in 2021, there was a total of 34. But 20 of these new ADUs are part of the 407 gateway development, proposed gateway development. So at this point, it's the end of our presentation, so council can certainly ask questions or make comments on anything within the presentation, or if you would like to provide some direction to staff related to the ADU capacity fee and what you would like to see in terms of this, that would certainly be helpful for staff moving forward. And there's all of the team here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and for the presentation. Bringing it back to council, do you have questions? Bringing it back to council, do you have questions? Okay, Councilmember O'Neil.
If we were to give lower fees, lower sewer fees or waive sewer fees for an ADU that's going to be below market rent, how would that be enforced? Or, you know, that they're held accountable for following through with that?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that question. I'm wondering if we can get Ms. Burke from our City Attorney's Office to jump in on that question?
Yeah, so we have to put a little bit of thought into how we would structure the program to both ensure that you're in compliance with the law, that you're not triggering prevailing wage for these projects, and also that you're ensuring that these units would be would be restricted in terms of the rent moving forward. But lots of cities do have programs like this where they say that they won't, either they don't charge for ADUs at all because they see ADUs as just being naturally a more affordable type of residential unit, or they don't charge fees for those ADUs that agree to be rent-restricted moving forward. We can have them enter into an agreement, but we just need to create a resolution that sort of lays out that, you know, that the fee is not due for any rent-restricted unit, and then that it's a choice by the developer applicant and how, you know, the agreement would be set forth thereafter.
Would it be possible to do something? I know the state used to have a program for seniors where they could waive their property taxes by having a lien put on the property. And then at some point, when the house changed owners, the property taxes would be paid back. Would it be possible for an ADU to maybe put a lien on the property and for the amount of the fees? And then at some point, if they ever refinance or sell, the city would get their fees for the ADU?
I would need to look into that and figure that out, whether that, I'm not aware of any cities doing it that way. And there may be, this is really a question for staff, there may be practical issues with ordering and administering that kind of program, depending on how many ADUs you have and whether or not it's worth it. But we can look into something like that if you're interested.
Councilmember Vada-Las.
I never heard of a program like that, Mike. So I have, I'm just going to start to look it up. The thing about affordable, what's affordable and what is affordable today versus what's affordable tomorrow? Because the rates for rents are ever-increasing. And I don't know how you determine that. I know there's like standards on what income is for affordable housing, but that they're very high right now, too. So I'm just not sure how you would determine that. That's it.
Any other questions? We should go to public comment? Let's go to public comment.
Mayor Beer, I'm not seeing any raised hands for public comment at this time.
Thank you, Sarah. Bringing it back to council.
I just kind of like given thoughts in that I don't know actually how popular ADUs would be in town, you know, because of the parking situations, especially you have up in Fairmont, Caddies Court, and others that we get chronic complaints about for parking and vehicle traffic and stuff. And I don't know if the city should be in the, you know, I understand why people want to do ADUs and stuff, but I haven't thought through waiving the fees for the sewers because that's a major capital expense. While with the park fees that we discussed last night, those, you know, are much more of a soft cost. Well, this is a hard cost to the city. So I'd like to hear other people's thoughts.
Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this is a really inarticulate thought that occurred to me while we were having the meeting in advance. But it's the thought that kind of sticks to my head, even though it occurs to me as being, I'm sure, overly simplistic. But what occurred to me was, we're averaging right now that an ADU would probably be 7,800 in fees. And what occurred to me at the meeting and stuck is, well, what would it look like if it was only 5,000 instead of 8,000? And just a matter of lowering it a little bit. So that, I guess my concern is that somehow this fee would be prohibitive in someone's mind for constructing an ADU that would be helpful to us? I don't know if that's a legitimate concern. I don't know if lowering it, that slight amount would make a big difference one way or the other. But that's kind of what's stuck in my brain. And so that's kind of the thought that I wanted to explore in whatever way is appropriate.
Mike, I'll call you after I go. I'm just going to go really quick. So the ADUs are really, really important to our community because we don't have a lot of multifamily buildings, right? And there's nobody coming in to build them. So if we're going to create housing for our community, this is one way that we can. And so for me, incentivizing that is really important. And to answer Sue Vada-Las, there's a formula that they used. Figure it out. And Councilmember O'Neil.
So, okay, going on the basis that we're not allowed to make a profit on something, that we are only allowed to recoup our costs for doing this. For us to waive the fees on an ADU would be an actual cost to the enterprise fund. Would that subsidy have to be made up somewhere else in rates? Or what, one? Two, do ADUs count towards our arena numbers? I see.
Yes, they do.
They do, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, but being based on the theory that we're not allowed to make a profit on something, is there another rate that would have to increase in order to subsidize waiving fees or reducing fees for ADUs?
So I'm not sure that I'm answering Councilmember O'Neil's question, but I have a suggestion because ADUs are important. And they came up yesterday as well as this evening. And my suggestion would be that during our housing element process that we kind of dive into and look at whether or not our fees are actually, and in fact, in a more scientific way, cost-prohibitive to construction? Because we, right now, we're looking at them fee by fee and worrying about, you know, whether or not we're impacting that type of development. And I think it's probably, in my opinion at least, better to kind of do it, you know, have a more scientific way, if you want to say it that way, of looking at it. And if we are potentially, you know, if we do have fees that could be impactful, then at that point, we can do that through a housing program, figure out how we can mitigate that rather than, I guess, sell our shelf short on each fee kind of as it comes along. That's just a suggestion.
See, because the impact, if this fee is waived and it has to be made up somewhere else in order to keep this in the enterprise fund, then you're going to take, and, you know, the little old lady that's gotten, you know, a $500 social security check but no loan on their house is going to be subsidizing it. You follow what I mean? And the minimum sewage fee would have to go up. Because when there's no way, I know parcel taxes, seniors can waive parcel taxes but not bonds. There's no way we could waive a minimum sewage fee because we are providing a service.
Councilmember Bigmeyer.
I wanted to follow up on what Tina was just saying about looking at this when we work on the housing element and looking at all of our fees across the board. Because if I'm remembering correctly, that's already on our docket. I can't say exactly when. But I know that in other conversations we've had, the answer has been, we'll look at that when we look at the overall fees. So how would postponing, if you will, bear on what's before us tonight? In other words, if we make a decision or give direction to staff, and then in a year or something, we look at our fees, how would we change it or what kind of catch-up might we do? What would the process be, is my question?
Oh, if I could just clarify, you're talking about specifically for the capacity fee? If we postponed implementing that? Yes?
In other words, if we said we're not going to charge an ADU, you know, this, for example, this conversation we're having right now. But then we look at it later and go, oh, we probably should be, or maybe we should charge them half or something like that. I'm trying to understand the difference between what we're being asked to look at tonight and how it could be impacted by our, looking at our fees as a separate project.
Isn't it interesting that I saw it the other way around? When Tina described it, I thought we were going to like go ahead with it tonight and then look at the housing element and then see if we had to reduce things.
Exactly how I was looking at it.
That's interesting, though, how we can see things so opposite.
Yeah. Well, I think largely because we're not charging it presently.
Correct.
And all jurisdictions that have ADUs charge it.
So currently, we are not charging the fee for ADUs. And I guess I would maybe kind of throw the question maybe over to Doug Dove or Michael DeCruy, which is a good question. If, you know, people aren't paying these fees, you know, they're not paying the capacity fees, then who's absorbing that cost? And it seems like the answer would probably be the people that currently are paying the fees and paying for the capital improvement program. And I'll look to Doug maybe to answer that.
Um, Ashley, can I jump in here really quickly? I can maybe address that question and some of the other ones that have come up. So as far as if you don't charge the full amount for ADUs, you know, your sewer utility is an enterprise fund. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't receive additional funds, you know, from other sources. So if you don't charge, you know, you always have the discretion to not charge a full capacity fee. But if you're not charging a full capacity fee, then there is some amount of money that needs to be picked up from other sources. So it's typically, I mean, for an ADU, especially if you're not having a ton of ADUs and you look at your overall budget for the sewer utility, it's probably not a massive amount of money that is being, you know, distributed elsewhere. But that is, you know, if you're not recouping funds from capacity fees from new development, you do have to get those funds from somewhere else, which is true. As far as the timing in terms of what you would do in this process, your capacity fees haven't been updated. I think, Lisa, you said 74. I know it's been a really long time. They're in desperate need of an update, aside from the ADU issue. And so, and it is also usually good practice, since you're moving forward with updating your sewer service charges, your sewer rates, that you do it at the same time because, you know, it's involving the same CIP plans and the same financial projections. And you're having your 12th public hearing for the sewer rates anyway. So it's a good practice to try to, you know, update the sewer capacity fees and the sewer rates at the same time. So if you are having, if you're uncertain and you feel like the ADU fees themselves maybe need some additional study or some additional thought, I agree with what Tina said that it might be a good idea to move forward with adopting these capacity fees, which apply to all types of development, not just ADUs. Also, maybe adopt a specific amount that would apply to ADUs because you have to calculate those fees a little bit differently. You do it by drainage fixture unit or square footage, in your case, drainage fixture unit. And then you can have those ADU fees not go into effect for another year. Or you can, you know, there are certain, you could, or it could go into effect immediately. And then as you study it, it's probably not going to be that many ADUs between the adoption of the fees and when you put in a potential program in the future. So in any case, I would have you deal with it maybe by adopting the capacity fees now, including an ADU fee, and then either keeping the ADU fee from going into effect immediately or adjusting it with some program in the future.
Thank you so much. Brian.
Hey, guys, I just wanted to add a little bit of information. It's been said that we haven't charged anything for ADUs, and that's not exactly correct. Historically, we, and we currently have a municipal code on the books for second units, right? And the ADU term is new. And of course, there are a lot of laws regarding ADUs that have happened in the past couple of years. But historically, the City of Pacifica always did charge for second units. And it was exactly 50% of the cost of your first unit. And that's a municipal code that we have on the books now. With all the ADU laws that came along a couple of years ago, basically said you have to charge proportionally, right? You can't just have a flat rate for an ADU. So that's, when those laws came out, that's the point we stopped charging for ADUs. But we actually did charge for ADUs. You know, they weren't really referred to as ADUs. But even at the beginning, when they were referred to ADUs, we were charging 50% of the cost of a single-family resident. So I just thought that would be some good information for you guys.
Thank you so much, Brian. Mayor Proten.
Thank you. So this, this isn't the public hearing, and we're not adopting fees until the public hearing itself, right? So the other thing that occurs to me, given the tremendous lack of public present to give feedback, is that when we actually have a public hearing, you know, if we give direction tonight, go ahead with the fee, and then we have the hearing, that's an opportunity for the public to tell us whether or not our inclinations that somehow this might be cost-prohibitive bear out in public thought or not. And as we take these steps toward coming to the conclusion of whether or not we want to mitigate some of these fees for the sake of affordable housing, it seems like we have plenty of time to gather data from staff and from the public and draw those conclusions as we go forward with the fee itself.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Would it be possible that we have four affordable ADUs, not regular ADUs, but affordable ADUs with a monitoring program, that there be an additional charge on new connections that goes into a fund that would be used to subsidize the affordable housing ADUs? Okay, so, because I know the sewer lateral thing is kind of structured because it was a fine either to the water agency or we could put it in and help fix sewer laterals. So we're fixing sewer laterals every year from some fund. Could we do something like that for ADUs? And either build that into the rate structure or new connections, part of it, you know, ADU fee, boom?
So I suspect that's probably something that we would have to look into, I would assume, Ms. Burke.
Yeah, I'm not sure 100% understood the, how the program would work as you were conceptualizing it. But we, you know, we can only charge as part of the rates what the actual cost of service is. And so even though you don't have an obligation as an agency, And so even though you don't have an obligation as an agency to charge a capacity fee at a certain amount, and that obviously will have other impacts. If you want to use the funds for other things, like affordable housing or, you know, the, you, we couldn't use the service rate revenue for that. So we'd have to look into other revenue sources potentially. And we would need to make sure that, you know, the sewer rates aren't funding, you know, programs beyond what the sewer service costs are.
Well, if the Renner's numbers are a state mandate, okay, which they pretty much are, isn't that a cost of doing business for the city since we're required to provide affordable housing? And the fees that we would be charging would be going into a specific fund just for ADUs and affordable housing?
So this would be like a separate fee apart from sewer service and apart from sewer capacity for funding affordable housing?
Right, I mean, it would stay only for sewer charges for affordable housing.
And this would be assessed against?
Well, you're the lawyer, you have to figure out. I always, I always tell Michelle, like, the council says what we want to do, you find a legal way to do it, okay? But, you know, I'm looking at, the state has mandated, we need 1,900 housing units, okay? And that's pretty much set in stone. Therefore, that is a cost of doing business, like, just like they tell us to put up stop signs and street lights and we have to have a cop on the street, okay? That is a cost of doing business. How can we, in order to subsidize affordable housing to reach the state mandate, can we charge full fee sewer connections, an affordable housing fee, affordable connection fee for ADUs? Or even possibly affordable housing? I don't know how far we could stretch that.
So. I think Tina popped up, did you want to say something?
Yeah, go ahead. I was just gonna say, if I understand Councilmember O'Neal's suggestion correctly, I, I think the answer is yes, but maybe different from how you stated it. I think cities regularly do charge impact fees for affordable housing to development. It's just not tied to sewer fees at all. And I would add, and I, this would be a policy decision for the council, that perhaps you would not quote unquote penalize ADUs with that fee, but rather attach that to market rate housing rather than the ADUs. Because you, you would just be making it more expensive to construct the ADU. So, so the answer is, I think, yes, we can. That's a program that many cities have. And I think you suggested that it be on our, you, Councilmember O'Neal, that's on our work plan, also in association with construction of commercial square footage as well. So I think it's yes, but just not with, in conjunction with this particular fee program. Yeah, I would say it's exactly right. You can have, to charge fees on new development, you have to charge them based on their impacts. And so since the sewer impacts are separate from any impacts on affordable housing, it wouldn't be part of the sewer fee. But there are impact fees that are charged to fund affordable housing. They're more, they're more common on commercial development, but there are impact fees, some cities have them for residential development as well.
Okay. You kind of know what I said. Thank you, Tina, for inter, for reinterpreting it for me.
Sure.
Do we have any other comments, questions? Councilmember Beckmeyer?
So not on the topic of ADUs, but in regard to the upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant, solar photovoltaic system and UV disinfection system upgrade. If I'm doing my math right, we're, it's going to cost us a million and a half to upgrade the solar, and we're going to save $200,000. So we have a seven and a half year payback on that. And then our UV disinfection system is 11 and a half, and we'll save about $400,000 a year. So a 27 and a half year payback, right? Break even. So how long does a UV disinfection system last? How long has the current one we've had lasted, 20 years, if? I'm not really sure, because I wasn't on council at that time.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, Councilmember Beckmeyer. And it's, it's a bit of a complicated question because, for example, our current UV system, we could probably keep it going for a few or more years if we could get the manufacturer to provide us with those parts. But they are discontinuing the parts, so we can't keep it going. So one of the things that we're going to be doing as we're moving forward with this project is we're going to be talking with these manufacturers. And one of our conversations is going to be, how long will you be supporting your system? So we feel that probably a lot of it is going to be related to how long they will be willing to support the system. And that's something we're going to dig into once we start getting into this project and talking with potential vendors.
And will we make that a part of our contract?
Absolutely.
They say 20-year, you know, support and 20 years. Now, in regards to the staffing, a while back, Western Cities had an article about what Hayward did. And what Hayward did was, was their sewer treatment plant was really, they put in enough solar power where they were actually doing their streetlights, and they saved like $400,000 a year there on their streetlights. But I know, we don't have the, enough land to put that out. But what they did is they opened up a dialogue, and they brought in high school students to learn the chemistry, et cetera, that you have in a sewer treatment plant, to try to start teaching locals, you know, what went on there and jobs for them later on in life. Is there, and I know Lorenzo talked to Kevin about this over Hayward, and Lorenzo thought this was like one of the best things he's ever seen. Is it possible for us to open up a dialogue with the high school to look at for chemistry students?
You know, that, that's a great question. And I know that, you know, first of all, you know, we do, we are trying to do more outreach just generally to the students. And that's one of the jobs that we have for, for one of our employees, John. And part of the problem that we've been having, of course, is the whole COVID issue. And probably Brian can talk a little bit about what kind of outreach he has done to that with them previously. As far as actually bringing them in, I, I know that Maria, you do do a lot of plant tours. And I'm not sure if you've actually brought in, you know, and taught local students at the high school. But we were recently having a conversation, and I'm trying to remember the name of the group. Do you remember, Maria?
It's Bay Works. It's Bay Works.
Bay Works, yes. So Bay, so Bay Works, we were having a conversation with Bay Works, which is local community college students that are studying wastewater and trying to bring them in for internship programs. So we have been looking at, at that. And we're in the middle of having some conversations with Bay Works right now. And they're sending us some information. But no, certainly, definitely, we could have John or Maria maybe look into having some sort of conversations with high school students as well.
I'll look, I'll send you, email you the article about Hayward. And then if you get in touch with Lorenzo, he can really talk to you about it. But he loved that program. He was like, I want to do this, you know?
Do we still have at Jefferson High School District? Is there still a CTE person? I know it was Karen Nuski at one point, but is, is there still a position for that in the administration?
A CTE person? No, no.
For educational education, no?
Yeah, not that I know of.
Oh, yeah.
No one, Mary, I don't know one.
No.
But I do know the unions would be happy, especially if they were recruiting girls for this. They have a whole program just to recruit women for these kind of jobs, so.
Yes, and I know Bay Works, their program is serving underprivileged students. So that's specifically who they're talking about providing for interns for wastewater. But yeah, that sounds, sounds interesting. I'd love to read that article.
Okay.
I love that idea. And Mayor Beer, I still have my hand up because I had one more thing I was going to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
For Councilmember O'Neal's excellent point on that, that potential tie-in with workforce development. I just want to say, in general, this is a general overview of this entire topic in light of the comment about our fees haven't been really looked at since 1974. And it kind of hearkens back to me about so many things that have been on hold or not addressed over decades. And I really want to commend our staff right now because I feel like part of what is bringing this forward is the professional level of our staff and the recognition of how a city stays solvent and how fees in, all play into those aspects. So, you know, I appreciate and understand from a rational standpoint and from a dollars and cents standpoint, why this is so important. But unless and until it's brought forward and put before a council to make a decision on it and give direction, it doesn't happen. It clearly hasn't happened for a very long time in this town. So a little bit on the theme of last night, just another aspect to me of the quality of our staff, and I want to thank you for this. And I really appreciate you bringing us into the current century on this. And really, it'll help serve our community going forward. Because this is the kind of thing where we're recouping costs, we're addressing the actual capacity needs so that we have money to keep building our system out and improving the service that we have in our community. So thank you.
And I wanted to mention, Lisa, when this comes to council for the public decision and public meeting and stuff, Brian might actually have this. When I first got on council, I did a whole infrastructure PowerPoint, and I went around to groups and gave the presentation maybe 10, 12 times. But there was a video of the infiltration, the ILI, that looked like it was a waterfall. And I, somebody from the sewer treatment plant sent it to me. But I think that would be a great visual to show why we need to do what we're doing. You know, and I don't know if Brian knows where it is or if it might even be on my computer still somewhere. I'll have to check.
Great idea. Well, what's more?
I'm just picking on you, Brian, because I think you're the longest-term person there.
I'm sure if we don't have that one, we can make another one pretty easily.
Okay, yeah, you got sewer cams, yeah. But I think that would be a great visual.
Yeah, good idea.
And so I think we can also bring the conversation back to our consideration item, like specifically. And Tina, can you just explain to me one more time that if, if we move forward tonight to hold the public hearing, including the ADU fees, then when we do our housing element, that's when we can look at that again to see if? I think I just need a little clarity there.
Hi, yes, so we, what I would suggest is, and I, and I believe this is already part of what, you know, some of what housing elements will study, is they will look at what, what our processes are for constructing housing and whether or not there's any barriers to housing, including the fees that a city charges. And so not only would we look at this fee as it relates to ADUs or other affordable housing, but also other fees as well. There's a potential that maybe our fees are not, you know, they're not cost prohibitive. And, you know, that even at an affordable level, that, that is a, something that's doable for, for these, the financing of an ADU. And then in that case, you know, it would be good for the council to know that instead of kind of deciding to reduce or eliminate fees before that factor is even known.
Thank you for saying it again. Sometimes I need to hear things like more than once, not like everything. So it sinks in a little bit. Okay. Your, your hand is still up, Councilmember Beckmeyer. Did you have anything else? Okay, cool. So.
That is?
I do see the need for all of these projects. I just thought I should, you know, speak up a little bit. I kind of think the ADUs or fees are too high. But, but I can wait till we do the housing element and we can look into that. Because I want people to build affordable housing. And I don't see, if we start adding all the fees, the park fees, the sewer fees, the impact fees, the this fee and that fee, then people won't build anything. And we obviously have to have things built. So I wouldn't mind lowering it now or making it half, but, but I can wait.
All right.
Okay. Should we have a motion? We need a motion, right?
And make a motion that we end the meeting? Adjourn, I'm sorry.
I think, so I think we'll need a motion to, to adopt the resolution before we adjourn.
Oh, okay.
I move to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pacifica stating its intention to hold a public hearing and consider updating the city's sewer service charges beginning tax year 2022, 2023 for a five-year period from fiscal year 2022, 2023 to fiscal year 2026, 2027, and provide direction on sewer capacity fees related to accessory dwelling units.
Second.
Hey, I heard the motion by Mayor Protem Big Stick, and I heard a second by Councilmember Beckmeyer. I'll start the roll call vote with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Votarlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Big Stick.
Big thank you to staff for being here, and I look forward to seeing you shortly, yes.
And Mayor Beer.
Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Plus five to zero.
Thanks, everyone.
Everyone, for adjoning the meeting at 7:09.
Bye.
Bye.
Goodnight, all.
Goodnight.